Cut on. Make sure your mic is on, Paul. Make sure your mic is on. Mike and Greg as well.
All right.
Okay. Welcome to the sixth of, I guess, March meeting at nine o'clock. We appreciate y'all being here and we'll open up in a word of prayer and a pledge by will. And if you would take a few minutes, just a few seconds, cut your phone on silent or off. It'd be well appreciated. I would do the prayer. Okay, y'all please stand. Father Lord, as we come this morning, Lord, we just give you the praise and glory, Lord, for the things you do in our lives, Lord, that we do not even realize. Father, we thank you for being here this morning with us, Lord, as we discussed the county's business, Lord. We ask that you would give us the knowledge and the wisdom to make good decisions, Lord, that that would be good for the county and be pleasing to you. But Father, most of all, we just thank you, who you are and what you do in our lives, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge and lead to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Lot?
Yes, Mr. President. You should have before you the February the 21st Board Minutes. I would ask if there are no changes for the board to please approve said minutes.
All right, are there any changes? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Supervisor Banks, Second Supervisor Jones. Discussion, all in favor? Aye. All opposed. Concerned citizens, we have Ms. Hutto. Okay, please come up and state your name, address, and two minutes.
Okay. We didn't know about the two-minute time limit, so we'll try to be brief. My name is Maren Hutto and I am, I live at 183 Cavanaugh Drive in Madison, Mississippi, and we're here on behalf of Madison Avenue Lower Elementary. This is Tress Johnson.
I'm at 169 Cross Creek Drive.
And we also have a few other parents here, Kristy Malatesta and Chris Booth in support. We are here in, like I said, with the Madison Avenue PTO. And last year, Tress and I served as co-presidents of the PTO, and this year, Kristy Malatesta and her colleague Katie Stewart are presidents. And just to give y'all a quick background, our school is K through second grade only. We're located 1199 Madison Avenue in what people consider the old side of Madison. And our school is approximately 33 years old. And I won't, due to time restraints, I won't go into the purpose and mission, but y'all can read there, this is our mission statement and that is in our bylaws. We do, we support a ton of functions at our school. As you can see here on several of these slides, we have different events at the school that we fully fund. We have community events, Arts on the Avenue, which was open to the community this year, and it was outside, Read Across America, we support guest authors coming in, several events that the PTO fully funds. And that leads us into the, we're gonna go ahead and jump into our kind of budget, so y'all can see what we use to fully run a PTO per year.
Right. If you see on page four, slide eight, just our normal operating budget for a year, should we not raise any funds, this is what it would cost just to run all these programs Maren just mentioned. Above that, you see the accelerated reader program, which is something we split with the school, which encourages reading, things like that. So lots of fun, but also educational activities and support of our teachers that we fund throughout the year. So it's about $25,000 if you round out. We also work on special projects. If you keep flipping, those are the bigger things that we are very proud of. In the past, we've purchased Promethean boards, which are the electronic school boards in every classroom. And if you keep funding, excuse me, flipping, page six, two things we're very proud of. We've historically funded the art program before the school took that over, a self-sustained art program that we paid for. Now that the school board's taken that over, we are also funding a new steam lab, and we're very proud of that because we're one of the only schools in the county to have a fully-staffed or professional to run the steam lab. We purchased electronic signs, playground shades. And then you can keep flipping to page or slide 13, excuse me, it kind of gives you an idea of the cost of that. Those are not necessarily the years they were raised, but the year they were expensed, but what those projects cost. So we've got a normal operating budget plus any special projects, including either the art or the steam lab, which we've helped fund. And how do we do that?
Yeah, so if you go over to slides 15 and 16, we want you to know that how, this is how we have, we run our PTO, we go to businesses, they're called our partners in education, and they either give us in-kind donations or monetary donations. We also have spirit nights, we sell merchandise, we use, we partner with Kroger for community rewards, things like that. Jumping over to slides 17 and 18, we, memberships, volunteers, and then we have two major fundraisers a year, our Mississippi Cheese Straw fundraiser's in the fall, and our Disney raffle is in the spring. And you can see there, this kind of gives you a ballpark of what we raise for those. Now, why are we here today? So we are, our playground, I don't know if you've driven by there recently, but has, needs some major upgrades for several reasons. Number one, the one you see from the road, it has wooden structures that are full of safety concerns, it's been, they've been repaired several times. It's also, our playgrounds have not been ADA accessible for years, which means children in wheelchairs have basically had to sit on the sidelines and watch their kids play recess during required recess time that is required by the school. And then also, it's just a community enhancement. You can drive by any day of the week and see children out there on our playgrounds while their siblings are practicing soccer or baseball in the fields behind our school. So it's open, our playgrounds are open to the community all days of the week. So we're gonna go into kind of where we are now. Oh, and by the way, the school district doesn't fund any recreational equipment at all, so all this equipment is solely funded by the PTO. So slides 21, you can see, this is what we did last year. We were able to fully fund this completed project, which cost approximately $100,000. Underneath there on slide 22, this is the structure that needs to be demolished, removed, and where we want to put in our new playground. And so you can see on that slide, there's wooden structures, it's very old. I'm gonna be honest, it might have been put in 33 years ago when the school opened, I really, we don't know. And our principals there have been there about 10 years, and they literally have no idea how long that's been there either, so.
But Maren did go to Madison Avenue, and she remembers these structures back in elementary school. But if you can see, we've got two different playgrounds. The Phase One at the top was on one of the playgrounds. We're looking to upgrade Phase Two, which is the other playground. There are structures on there now, you can see in the background, that have been upgraded, and we're not touching those. We're just focusing on a piece of the puzzle here. And one of the bigger pieces is there's gravel now, and one of our big expenses is getting rid of that gravel, because adding mulch, which the school board will help us with, allow, will allow a child in a wheelchair to get to the playground at least. So if you can see, slide 24 and 25, that's just what our Phase Two looks like. We've split it into four different phases. If you look at page 13, slide 25, Phase Two is gonna cost about $220,000, $25,000, but we were able to split that into four phases, which is outlined on page 25. And then 26 just shows you what we've completed. Phase Two A, which is what we're raising money for now, is about $106,000. And then the rest of the phases there, we're getting Struthers Construction to help us with this, they've done other schools, I think they just won something for Canton Schools, they're helping with Upper Madison Middle. But if you can keep flipping, Phase Two A is what we're looking at now, which is about $100,000.
Yeah, and this is the structure that it will look like. And you'll see the ramps for the ADA accessibility, also the little bridge is also ADA accessible. So all of this can be used by all of our students at our school.
And if you look at the main slide, slide 30, page 15, you can see a breakdown of the cost. The PTO has currently raised $80,000, so about 75% of the funds have been raised to date. We're still short about 26. We're very focused on getting this done now. It's about four months from order to install, and we'd really like to get this done over the summer. So if we can order now, we can get this done over the summer and not interrupt any school time. You know, we've, as Maren mentioned, we've.
Let's go ahead and try to.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry.
So we're here today to ask y'all for, so we're lacking $26,000 on this Phase Two A project. And because it's used a lot by the community, it'll allow all of our children accessibility, we're just asking that y'all consider maybe partnering with us to help us get this large Phase Two A kicked off and installed before the school year. And just kind of our last reason why we've taken time out of our busy schedules to be here, the last slide is a, it's a post from our PTO website, our Facebook page, and it shows one of the parents and grandparents, just their son, Lucas, sorry I get emotional because I think it's awesome, but he was able to play in the playground. That's why we're here, because we haven't had students for years not be able to do that. And it takes a lot of work, and we've done a lot of work, and we're just asking for a little bit of help.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So thank you for your time today.
Yes, thank you.
Thank y'all. Any questions?
And our information's the last thought, so email, I'll fight over.
Okay. Appreciate y'all coming.
Thank you.
Presenting, thank you. Okay, next on the consent, on the concerned citizen is Kristy Magyar.
Chastity Magyar. And it looks very simple to pronounce, but I've heard so many ways Magyar being said.
Okay.
So I just wanted to drop in today, I won't take much of your time, and coming from a school board for seven years, I appreciate outside people coming in and trying to help their community and offset those costs and so that the community, the school district having to do it. But my purpose for being here today is I am running for the District 22 Senate seat, and some of that encompasses Madison County, specifically Districts 2, 4, and 5, follow in District 22. And so I just wanted to come introduce myself to you, you see me, me see you, and tell you just a little bit about myself. I'm a, I live at 253 Ingram Loop. I'm a lifelong citizen, born and raised and been to Mississippi. I'm a Christian, first and foremost, and conservative. My husband and I have four children. My background originally is in education, which I spent five years of my time, I guess, in the education world at Holmes Community College instructing students. At that point, I took a work sabbatical and homeschooled my four children, who are now starting to phase into regular schools so that they could be more social and have athletics added to their, to them. After that, I spent seven years on the school board district of Yazoo County, which I just came off in December, so that I could run for this position. And I just wanted to let you know that if elected, I want to have a close working relationship with y'all so that we can figure out what's best for the citizens of Madison County. And you five and everybody else in this room better know your county than I do. And so I would just like to work close with you to figure out what they need and help get that pushed through in the legislature if elected. So again, just Chastity Magyar, wanted to meet y'all and y'all may meet, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you for coming, Chastity. Other concerned citizens, Greg?
Yes, sir. First on the list is Dinson Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, I think you have someone else coming up with you.
I got Mike Hudgens with Mike's Alderman for Ward Five in Madison. Mike, you want to address the board first?
Sure. Thank you, board, for hearing us this morning. My name is Mike Hudgens, I'm an alderman for Ward Five in the city of Madison. My home address is 1004 Derby Cove, that's in Cypress Lake subdivision. Cypress Lake is one of my neighborhoods in Ward Five. It was, has in, in the past been in District Two, it is now in District One. And we're here to ask for funding for repaving the Cypress Lake Boulevard and Lake Circle. There are approximately 532 homes in Cypress Lake, and our last traffic count, there was about 3,500 cars per day traveling the Boulevard. Since then, the construction entrance has been closed, the neighborhood is built out, and I would have, would guess that that number is much higher. The Boulevard has been being patched now for a number of years. Lake Circle has a large area or two that needs digging out, and we're just gonna see that continue to get worse. It's gonna get more expensive, and I'd like for us to address that now. And we're here today to ask you to consider helping us by funding that project.
Do you have any idea of the cost?
I'll let Dinson speak to the numbers.
Yeah, thank you for your time, it's good to see some of you guys again, worked with y'all for a long time. Supervisor Jones, it's approximately a million dollars to do the two streets that we're talking about, Lake Circle and Cypress Lake Boulevard. So we're trying to see what funding is possibly available, and anything that the county could do to assist us with that, we certainly would appreciate it. There's, I think the breakdown, it's about $600,000 on the Circle and about $400,000 on the Boulevard, so. And I would gladly answer any questions you have about where we're at or how we're trying to get there.
Okay. I would ask for Tim to come up for a minute. And Tim, I know on our bond that we issued a couple of months ago and roads, how much is left within that bond that hasn't been committed?
There's $395,000 that's uncommitted at this point.
$395?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sheila?
Let's go ahead and commit that, I make a motion that we take the extra $395 and put it toward, what is it?
Cypress Lake Boulevard and Lake Circle, both in the Cypress Lake subdivision.
Second. We have a motion by Supervisor Jones, Second Supervisor Baxter. And do y'all have a copy of those roads? I mean, the name of the roads, not a copy, but the name of them that you could give to our attorney?
We will, yes, sir.
Yeah, I've got that.
And the name of the ones that we didn't get to, too, are there, getting all of them?
All of them that have been requested.
Yeah, I've not seen the, what was on the fund, we just, we had to request it.
I think we have $395 left out of the bond that we issued, and I know that we're planning on passing an MOU today, you know, with the city of Madison and Ridgeland and Glutstadt, I think, as well. And so, Mike, would you include those two?
Sure.
Those two roads on? All right, we have a motion on the table, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all very much for your time, and we certainly appreciate your funding these streets. Thank you.
You bet, we'll add that to the MOU.
Mr. Robinson again, see you, Mike. It's good seeing you. Yeah, I'm not real good at being retired, so. Got your building named after you, that's pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dinson.
Good to see y'all.
Greg, are there any other MOUs? I mean, other concerned citizens, that is.
Yes, sir, a couple more.
Okay.
First, next up on my list is what I believe to be Pete Vetso, V-E-Z-Z-O, maybe?
Got it. Thank you, Pete.
Okay, next up would be Randy Elland, Elland?
Hold on one second.
Can we go ahead and address Maren's request to, since she's been sitting here? If we're gonna start handling business, I'm sorry, what'd you say? Well, no, it's, it's fine, but I know that you probably have something else to do. I don't have any prob, I mean, do you guys have any problem helping them with their request?
Mike, what, what do you think about this?
Yeah, there's a legal issue there.
It's a great project, but it's complicated. The state gives authority to the county to assist schools on such projects. You know, for instance, recently, we helped to create a track around a school, but we did it county labor, county equipment, county materials. We didn't give the school any money. So we can help the schools. I don't believe we could just assist a PTO, 'cause it might be donation, donations are illegal. So, it's a great project, if you want to do it, we had to figure out a way to do it, but I know the request would better come from the school.
Okay.
And not PTO.
So, and I'll say, we have to pay the school, we donate it to the school, so we raise the funds, but we give the money to the school, and then the school purchases it and it becomes them, so I don't know if that.
That's what you do, that's not what we could do. For us, it'd be a donation to give to you to give to the school, it'd still be a donation 'cause we're giving it to you.
Could you pay the company that we pay directly?
No. As I said, we have to work.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we helped their school recently before they wanted a racing drag, you know, track.
Yeah.
But the county provided labor, equipment, and materials to do that. We just didn't give the school money. So that's, you know.
And do it that way?
My question would be, do y'all, have y'all, have y'all been able to go in front of the school board?
We have requested and been told the school board does not help. I've emailed the superintendent assistant and we're told that. They have to approve it, so they're aware of it, they had to approve Phase One, and they will help with the mulch.
Okay, so y'all have not made it in front of the school board at this point, then?
Ladies, would y'all come up to the microphone, so we can hear it for the record? Answer the question.
We have not, we've, we've approached the school about that, but we've not been told to, to be in front of the school board, 'cause that's just something, we, we've asked, we've talked, Charlotte seals, and we were just told we were, they don't do that.
It, it looks like what has to happen is the school, the school board or superintendent needs to make the request to us.
Okay. Okay.
And we'll work out something with them to do what we can do.
Okay. Okay.
That, that's what, keep it legal.
Okay. Okay. No, it's good.
I would be curious, one school board said no as well. I mean, because this, because you're, we're dealing with the school. And we have school board.
I'm curious as well.
And so, you know, it'd be good, and I'm sure they have a, a good answer, a legit answer.
Yeah.
It's just, I, I just don't know what it is, but I would like to, you know, maybe hear back.
Okay.
And see, you know, see why they said no.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll see if we can find out.
And I did, when we, when we reviewed the mission statement, it is interesting that our mission statement says educational resources needs and recreational needs. So this must be something, obviously, it's, you know, been around a long time, if we have to address that in our, in our mission statement, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other concerned citizens?
Yes, sir. Next on the list is, I think that says something, Ellen, Mr. Elland or Elland, from Deanco.
You say Mr. Eun?
Elland, E-L-L-A-N-D. Oh, okay, he's not speaking currently, all right. Next up will be Lisa Hallford, or Hallford.
All right.
Hallford, Lisa Hallford.
Please come to the microphone and state your name and address in two minutes, please, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Lisa Hallford, my address is 221 North Shore Boulevard in Lake Caroline, and I think that we have two supervisors for the situation I'm describing, Carl Banks and Trey Baxter both. And our situation on North Shore Boulevard is a severe drainage problem. My husband and I have lived at our address for seven years, and this has been the case for seven years. But it's getting worse. We have a sinkhole that every time it rains, it fills up with water. And from both sides of the street, the water comes into the street and narrows down to one lane. And it is, as I, as I like to say, it is unsafe because it's just down to one lane. If two cars are coming at the same time, one of them has to, or both of them have to go through water. It is, not only is it unsafe, it is unsightly, and it is unfair. The rest of the neighborhood has drainage. All we need are some, some gutters, or whatever the term is, for the drainage in the street. For some reason, it was left off in our section of the street, I don't know why. The rest of the neighborhood has drainage, but we do not, and we want some. Just a week and a half ago, I rallied about 25 to 30 people of my neighbors that came out, and Tim Bryan came out and met with us, and we discussed it, and we would love to have something done about this, because it, as I said, it's unsafe, unsightly, and it's unfair. We need some drainage, and we would so appreciate your consideration for that.
Supervisor Baxter, Supervisor Banks.
So Tim has, Tim has some information for us.
Tim, come on up and share.
Oh, and one other thing, one of my neighbors, Kathy Ingram, it's at the worst in front of her house. She can't even step into the street and get mail out of her mailbox. That's how, how much water we're talking about. It isn't just a little bit of water, it's a lot of water.
Okay. Tim?
Yeah. Ms. Lisa is correct, we went out there last week, and this has been an ongoing issue for quite some time. And as you all know, we, we voted, or you all voted, to overlay that road. So this is an issue that really needs to be corrected before we spend the money to overlay that road and, you know, have, have a deteriorated section of road again, once we've just overlaid it. So we've gone out and we've looked at two different options. Both of those options are about $40,000 apiece. One is to run two inlets down to the lake, and the other is to raise the curb up. The inlet idea is a better solution because everything's flat out there, and it's just sunk. So if we bring it back up, then we, we still have a flat area. We don't have anywhere for the water to go, it's, so. We'd, we'd rather go the inlet route, but it's, it, both of those options are in the 40 grand range.
Greg, is there a fund out there we can access 40 grand?
There is, since it is a, a sinkhole, we could, it's not a sinkhole, then that, that option's out. But there are reserve road funds, there's some landfill hosting fees, there may be a few different pots of money we, we could pull.
We can find the money.
You, you have a motion? I'll put a motion in for Greg to access 40,000 from, which fund do you think would be the, or do you want, need time to look, or what, what do you want to do?
I'd just ask him to find the 40,000.
Yeah, just find it, yeah.
Yes, sir. My, my suggestion would be to just instruct, I mean, to find 40 grand.
Do that.
And Tim, do you, have you gotten bids on this project?
No, we've just gotten estimates on it. We've run the numbers on usual costs for the things that we, that would be required that we've done recently.
My motion would be for Greg to find the 40,000 and you go through the proper process to get the hole fixed.
I'll second a motion.
We have a motion, a second, and I'm just gonna throw this out to Supervisor Baxter. I know this is the estimate that you gave. Is 40,000 gonna be, or do we need to up it to 45, just to make sure that you don't have to come back to the board?
I think 40 will be enough.
Okay, good deal. We have a motion on the table, a second, discussion, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you each for your service.
All right.
Greg, any other concerned citizens?
No, sir, that concludes the list.
Okay. Coming down to consent items, any consent items that need to be removed? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion Supervisor Baxter.
Second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, all opposed. Coming down to business items, Cornetus Bacon Road Manager.
Come on, boy.
Morning.
I got two proposals on the cloud surplus equipment to be sold on the end of this month, and I got two, Deanco, and I got Jeff Martin. Deanco had the highest rate of 218,000 with 7% commission, and Jeff Martin had 172,500 with a 9 cent commission. So I'm asking the board president where you sign off.
Do I have a motion? Wait, wait, what's the motion now? I didn't understand what.
This equipment we got to sell.
Okay, would the motion be the, that you want to accept Deanco?
Deanco, yes, sir, accept Deanco, auction for the.
Okay, I'll make that motion that we accept Deanco, even though in your, your, the letter I have here, all the memorial, it, it, both of them have the same commission rate.
But, yeah, well.
Except a different commission rate.
But it shows a different dollar amount.
It shows a different dollar amount, so I make, I'll accept the one that has, that fills and guarantees the higher dollar amount of 218. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second Carl's motion. All right, we have a motion by Carl, second by Trey, discussion. All right, all in favor? Say aye. Aye. All opposed. Cornetus, you wanna tell us about these Kim Crowe estimates?
That's, that's the greatest guy to come last board meeting, so I just put it on there for y'all to look over. You guys discussed it today, so I just want y'all to get together and look over it with the price he gave us.
All right, we'll look at it in the next couple of weeks, and if we're going to move forward, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda.
That'll work.
All right, thank you. Tim?
First item I have is final plat for Glenwild Phase Four. This is a 41-lot development on 17 and a half acres. We do have the letter of credit for the final wearing surface.
Motion.
Second. Got a motion Supervisor Jones, second Supervisor Baxter, discussion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Item 33.
Final item I have is the CENI contract for Bozeman Road Phase One improvements. Neil Schaefer was selected back on the 5th of December in 2020. We began negotiations with them on the, the fee. The fee is a not to exceed 2.2495,368,31 cents to perform the CENI services for Bozeman Road Phase One.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion Supervisor Baxter, second Supervisor Jones, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weeks.
Mr. President, Board of Supervisors, good morning.
Good morning.
First item I have is the planning zoning draft minutes for February 16th, 2023.
Motion. Got a motion to acknowledge by Supervisor Baxter, second Supervisor Jones, discussion, all in favor? Say aye. All opposed. Item 35.
Next item, strategic site LLC, this was a conditional use for a public quasi-public facility utility, a communication tower that is on the mega site. Planning Commission approved, 21623.
Move.
Second. Motion Supervisor Banks, second Supervisor Baxter, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Item 36.
This is Dirt Dreams LLC, it was a conditional use for mining operations. It's at the southeast corner of Highway 17 and Pat Cobb Road, zone day one, and Supervisor District Five. It was approved by the Planning Commission, 21623.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Supervisor Griffin, second by Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor? Say aye. All opposed.
The next item is a Mini, Mini J Bozeman Family Limited Partnership. Need to set an appeal hearing date. This was approved by the Planning Commission, but a, an appeal was filed, and we want to set the hearing date for April 17th, 2023.
Got a motion Supervisor Baxter, I'll second, discussion, all in favor? Say aye. All opposed.
Next item is a preliminary plat, Woodgate subdivision, it's on the southeast corner of Yandle Road in North Old Canton. It is zoned R2 residential, is in Supervisor District Five.
Motion Supervisor Griffin, second Supervisor Jones, discussion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed.
And the last item is to approve registration and related expenses for, expenses for some international code council training classes for William Hawkins, for building inspectors.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion Supervisor Baxter, second by Supervisor Griffin, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
It's all in hand.
Thank you, Scott. Mike, our board attorney.
Good morning again.
Morning.
I've got three items here. The first one is all about this EWP project, emergency watershed planning. If you click on the agenda, you'll see the document. So the federal government sent us the award agreement, and so I'd like to ask you to acknowledge the award agreement from USDA. And if you look at it, they approved three parts of the Battle Creek area to be cleaned, Sim Street, Sizney Avenue, and Jackson Street. And the award, the award is 234, 234,007050, that's the budget. They agreed to pay 75% of this project, that's, you know, 106,300305. So, and then we have to pay the remaining 25%. As you remember, this board agreed to pay half of that 25%, and then the City of Canton agreed to pay the other half of that. So at the city's last board meeting, I would have made a presentation on bottom of this board. I told them that we're the local sponsor, we'll do the work, it's reimbursable by the federal government, we'll handle all of the paperwork and everything we have to do. They agreed to do it, and I left a MOU with them, with the figures delineated. Now, I've not received that back from them, but I know that they said they would do it. So all I can tell you is that I'd like for you to acknowledge this document. This is the award agreement from USDA.
Do I have a motion to acknowledge?
To acknowledge.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, second Supervisor Griffin, discussion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed.
All right, then Mr. Banks will, I guess, work the seat of Canton to make sure we get the document.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. The second one, we've talked about before, this is the Center Brook Children's Home. They're asking for tax exemption. We had some concerns, because in the document they filed before, it said that the property they wanted to be exempt was owned by an LLC, limited liability corporation, which is not by definition a nonprofit. So we kicked it back and asked a lot more questions. I've met with their lawyer, and he's, his explanation satisfied me that part of it's an LLC just for liability purposes, but not for tax exemption. So they have, they have amended the request for one parcel, and I have seen the Secretary of State's incorporation document, I have seen the IRS exemption. As a nonprofit, I would ask you to approve tax exemption for Center Brook Children's Home, and this for ministerial purposes, religious purposes. That is the parcel they like to be exempt, and I recommend that we do that.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve that with that parcel number, number, second by Supervisor Banks.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? Say aye. Aye, all opposed. And Mike, I appreciate, we appreciate you looking into it a little deeper than.
Thank you.
Than what it was.
And the last one, Mr. Griffin, is, we had a citizen from Mr. Griffin's district who donated two lots to the county. They're very near the park, Sofa Springs Park, but she moved to Florida. And we found out that it's more complicated, because she was not the only owner. So I prepared a deed with Mrs. Barbara Sims and three other people. They've all signed it, and when we got back from Washington Thursday night, I went to office Friday, and the deed was in the mailbox. I did review it. It was signed, it was confirmed, everything looked good. I thought I had it in my briefcase, and I don't. But I've seen it, and it's fine. I would like you to approve it, so we can file it, and I can get it back up here this afternoon. So bone presentment by your board lawyer to the Jefferson Clerk, I would ask you to accept the deed, and we can file it, and you will own, she donated two lots.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, but that is up there by Camden Park, right next to the.
All right. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion Supervisor Griffin, second Supervisor Banks, and Mike, you say you'll bring it back this afternoon, tomorrow?
I have it.
And, Ron, if you would, make sure it's just included in the minutes.
Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Greg, County Administrator?
Morning, Board. Couple of things for you today. First is item 43, which is the Massett Steering Committee nomination. I brought this to y'all at the last meeting, and it was requested that we go back and figure out if it has to be a supervisor. It does not.
Kind of what I thought.
Put Greg on there.
Second. First of all, we do have a motion, second, but which, which committee do you like to be on?
That's such a tough choice.
Tell us, we'll put it in a minute.
Reinsurance is the first one. We'll go without reinsurance.
All right, we got a motion Supervisor Griffin, second Supervisor Baxter, for you to be on that committee. Discussion, all in favor? Say aye. Aye, all opposed. You will do well.
Thank you. I, I certainly hope so.
And thank you for checking into it.
Yes, sir. Item 44 is a request for E911 funds, but contrary to other requests that this board has approved in the past, this is from a fire protection district rather than a city. Since I have been here, so in the last roughly year, this board has approved a request from the city of Canton and the city of Madison. This is a different entity. This is a fire protection district rather than a city.
So, so basically, what I'm hearing you say then is, we, we give them money every month, according to their millage?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They have a dedicated millage, and in this case, that millage went up this year from eight mills to 10 mills.
Okay, I, I got you. I, I understand it.
Tell us what they're trying to do with this money.
Trying to buy radios. They purchased three vehicles, and they would like radios to go in those vehicles.
Is there any other fund that we might be able to help them?
There may be. I don't know of any off the top of my head, because we have not historically given money to fire protection districts over and beyond their millage.
And that's what we have to be very careful about.
Yeah.
You know, the same way with the schools, that, the school that was in front of us as well. You know, it kind of sets a precedence. Doesn't mean that we can't help or anything, it's just, we have to be very careful.
Greg, I, I will, I don't know if we need a motion, but I'll, I'm, I'm willing to allow you to research it, and research the various funds, and see if, you know, what you come up with.
If, if that's what y'all would like, that's no problem at all. I'll figure out if there's, there's other money available.
That sounds good.
Okay, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right, Nason, cop trailer. Good morning.
Item 45 is just approval of the budget amendments and the interfund cash transfers.
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, second Supervisor Baxter, discussion, all in favor? Say aye. All opposed.
The next items, 46 through 49, it's just approval of the general claims docket and three payroll dockets.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion Supervisor Baxter, second Supervisor Griffin, discussion, all in favor? Say aye. All opposed. Supervisor Baxter.
Which ones you got left?
50.
Motion to approve the Fleet Corps docket.
Motion.